Chairman Gary Mulligan, I'd like to call the December meeting of the Town of Ulster Planning Board to order. We could all rise on our own and say the pledge of allegiance. You wish to join me? Thank you.
A diligence.
The United States. To the Republic. One nation, indivisible, liberty.
Thank you.
Gary, before we get started, a comment, the way the county runs the meeting. At a vote, they ask for any rejection to the vote rather than acceptance. It makes it a little smoother and quicker.
So they just ask if anyone's opposed?
Right.
Okay. Sounds good. All right, Gabby, if you're on board, we could do a roll call.
Ms. Hayner, Mr. Almquist?
Yes.
Mr. Deckard? I think you have to unmute yourself.
I see him.
Yep.
He's apparently connecting to audio.
Okay, so I'll circle back. Mr. Furman?
I'm here.
Mr. Moore is excused. Mr. Stravopoulos?
Here.
Chairman Mulligan?
Here.
And he's still connecting, but I'll mark him as here. I see him.
So Ms. Hayner is absent at the moment?
Yeah, I haven't heard from her. I'm not sure if she'll be logging in and she's just late or not.
Okay. Oh, we do have a quorum. So that's good. Dan, I'd like to appoint you as an active member of the board. If, under the understanding of if Ms. Hayner signs on, she will step back into her spot. Okay, thank you. First item of business, public hearing with Vincent Oregonini, major subdivision. Michael, do you have anything to add?
Well, the only thing I can really add this month is that we did meet with the sewer and water. And the only real request that we had other than, you know, we will have lot one will utilize the existing water and sewer that is on within lot one. The Water Department asked us to have three separate laterals for the three remaining lots, and that is due to the fact that one was to break, not all the homes would get shut down with water. So that was basically all that has really changed. Otherwise, as you knew previous to last month, we added the road to lot four. So with that being said, the road was added to lot four as asked by the planning board. We have a maintenance agreement drawn up by Andy Zwieben. We have the three laterals now shown for the lots four, lot number three, and lot number two. And lot number one will utilize the existing utilities that are there. That is the only change as from last month.
Okay. Did everyone see the, Michael's revised drawing with the utility?
Yes.
Yes.
The Pixton? Okay. Any further questions regarding that?
Mike, I just have one question. I don't have the map in front of me, but the road, who owns, who will own the private road?
Lot four.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah, lot four and and I believe that is specified also, not only on the map will it show the total area, but it's specified in the maintenance agreement that it goes with lot four.
Okay.
Okay. Hearing no other questions, comments from the board at this point, I'd like to open the public hearing. This is the second of two public hearings for this subdivision application. I could have a motion to open the public hearing.
Almquist, you're on, open the motion.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Mr. Furman, discussion. All those in favor? Aye. Okay, public hearing is open. Is there anyone in the public that has any comments about this application? Okay, hearing none, and I've seen no correspondence regarding this application forwarded to me. If I could have a motion to close the public hearing?
Almquist, break the motion.
I'll second.
Okay. Motion and seconded, discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. The public hearing is closed. Any other comments? We do have a resolution regarding this, and David, would you like to read it?
Sure, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so for the Vincent Oregonini final plat, major subdivision. The resolution is whereas the applicant Vincent Oregonini seeking subdivision approval in accordance with section 16110 of the town code. And whereas the applicant proposes to create four residential lots from two existing lots utilizing a shared private road. And whereas the proposed lots comply with the minimum lot size and dimensions of the R10 zoning district. And whereas pursuant to section 1619 of the town code, the proposed action is classified as a major subdivision and which is subject to the approval of the Town of Ulster Planning Board. And whereas the applicant's materials in support of the proposed action include consent to file form and escrow agreement, map of subdivision prepared by Vin- for Vincent Oregonini and Lorraine Oregonini prepared by Vitari Land Surveying, application for preliminary plat approval, seeker short form EAF, and application project review by David Church dated 10/1820. Whereas referral is not required to the Ulster County Planning Board pursuant to the County Land Use Referral Guide. And whereas the planning board considered the application materials submitted by the applicant in support of the proposed action along with comments of its consultants made via memorandum. Whereas in accordance with chapter 161, section 1619 of the proposed action is a major subdivision and the planning board held public hearings November 10th, 2020 and December 8th, 2020 before taking action. And whereas the planning board classifies the proposed action as seeker unlisted and makes a negative declaration upon review of the entire record concluding that the action will not pose any large or significant potential adverse environmental impacts. Now therefore be it resolved, the planning board has determined they have complied fully. The procedural requirements of seeker and further be it resolved, the Town of Ulster Planning Board hereby grants major subdivision approval as described. And if you got a version, an earlier version, just strike the reference to a different project. But Gabby corrected that later this afternoon. Subjected conditions and limitations and restrictions set forth below. One, that a private road maintenance agreement for the map right away and road be filed with the Town of Ulster to satisfaction of the planning board chair in consultation with town consultants and staff. Two, that the plat be filed with the office of the county clerk after signed by the chairman of the planning board. Three, plat be signed and filed shall memorialize the sewer and water easement to the Town of Ulster to be finalized by the planning board chair. Four, plat shall contain a note that any planning board approvals herein do not constitute a change in zoning in any affected parcels. Five, no changes, erasures, modifications, or revisions shall be made to any part of the approval after being endorsed in writing. Six, the final plat must be filed with the office of the county clerk within 62 days of approval. And seven, all fees shall be paid.
Okay, thank you. I would like to add just one additional wording in item one. Where it says, to the satisfaction of the planning board chairman in consultant, in consultation with the town attorney and town consultants and staff. Okay. Do I have a motion to accept the resolution with that amendment and item one?
I'll make that motion.
This is Andrew, I'll second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Any opposition to the motion? Hearing none, motion is carried. And you're all set, Michael and Mr. Oregonini?
In terms of any notes that would be added to the map, just if I could get them in writing, I will revise that tomorrow.
Thank you. Old business. We have the Joseph Emanuel Site Plan Amendment.
All right, so we went through this pretty extensively last month. And we reviewed the notes from the county today. They are asking for us to confirm the location of the septic, which is already confirmed by my map. That is the location of the septic. And obviously reputed septic area, they're asking us to prove that we have a secondary area. They were a little concerned with the word reputed. The word reputed is generally put on a map by a surveyor because we do not certify subsurface structures. So reputed means that that is where it is said to be. With that being said, we have no problem, we're not adding any bathrooms or anything along those lines. We already have a 1,250 gallon tank with the current leach field that's set there, and we have plenty of room for a septic reserve. So if there, somebody has to review that or however that the board would like to handle that, that's fine. There's no lack of space and we have a, an existing septic system that is, works, you know, beyond fine. So we're not worried about any of that kind of stuff causing an issue. And the space for the septic reserve is actually quite large. Probably almost enough room to put two septic reserves if was required. So there's really no issue there with anything from what the county has responded. So otherwise, last month, we covered all of our changes. You know, including the bump stops for the cars, for the new parking, 20 additional parking spaces and so on. So that's where we're at with this particular plan.
Hey, Michael. I think two previous meetings, there was a discussion. Ms. Hayner brought up the fact that the proposed warehouse use that we talked about it not being used for automotive repair. And you said, well, we could put conditions on that to that effect.
Yeah, that's, that's, Joe doesn't intend to use it for repair.
It's okay.
It's so that, that's, that's no problem.
Just so that's clear. Okay. We are in advisory capacity for this project as the square footage is more than 2,500 square feet. So the town board is final authority to approve this site plan. We will be recommending to the town board that they approve this site plan as proposed. We also will be recommending, excuse me, a seeker unlisted action with a negative declaration. And I believe that's in the resolution. And I can't think of anything else, David, any other items I might have missed?
I think that covers it, Gary.
Okay.
Are you all good, Gary?
Okay. So we do have a resolution to the town board. I would like to add one condition that we recommend the town board have wording to the effect that the warehouses would not be used for automotive repair or servicing. Does anyone have any comments about that? Okay, hearing none. David, would you like to read the resolution? And we'll have to make that, that one additional amendment.
Sure. Whereas the applicant Joseph Emanuel seeks site plan approval for construction of two new storage buildings with stockade fencing extension. And whereas the applicant has submitted a complete site plan application to the Town of Ulster Planning Board in coordination with the Ulster Town Board, including a submitted State Environmental Review Act Short Environmental Assessment Form. And whereas the planning board agrees that the Ulster Town Board has final review and approval authority for this application. And whereas the Ulster Town Board has referred this application for review to the Ulster County Planning Board, who returned an advisory comment on confirmation of adequate septic and septic reserve areas, which has now been met by the applicant. Then you, okay. Now therefore be it resolved, the planning board recommends that said town board be designated as lead agency. Type the application as unlisted action under seeker and make a negative declaration that this action will have no significant adverse environmental impact. And be it further resolved, the planning board recommends that the Ulster Town Board grant final site plan approval consistent with the application materials submitted. And in addition, your amendment. Correct, Eric?
Correct. Thank you.
I guess be it further resolved, the planning board recommends that the site plan, that, that use not include automotive repair or servicing?
Yes, we could say, you know, subject to the conditions, limitations, or restrictions set forth below and item one.
Okay.
Include that wording.
It will also be reflected when I, when the building is built and I issue a certificate for it, I have to classify the building's use. So if I classify it as a U building, it's only used for storage. It's not different class, occupancy classification. So he has to ask for that to do anything, and then we'd be back at the planning board.
Okay. Okay. Can I have a motion to accept the resolution as amended?
Almquist, I'll make your motion.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll make the second, I second the motion, Andrew Stravopoulos.
Thank you. Discussion? We'll do a roll call vote for this.
Ms. Hayner?
Yes.
Mr. Almquist?
Yes.
Mr. Deckard?
He's there, I don't think he has audio.
No, I'll circle back again.
He's trying.
Mr. Stravopoulos?
Yes.
Chairman Mulligan?
Yes.
Larry, if you want to give me a thumbs up for yes. Or down for no.
Yeah, I don't think he can hear us either. All right, well, we have four of five, we have the it's passed, so. Okay. Next item of business. Daniel Nguyen, major subdivision. This is actually new business, but since Mike, Vitari is representing these folks also, we thought we'd do his three clients together, so.
Appreciate that. That is a nice bonus to keep me moving here.
Christmas bonus.
Yeah, Christmas bonus. Let me know when you're ready and I can start.
Go ahead.
Okay, so what we have here is 12.009 acres, which is the remaining lands of a 60 acre parcel that dates back to the mid 1800s. This was a pretty difficult reconnaissance and survey, so on. Moral of the story, we are proposing a four lot subdivision out of 12.009 acres. Lots one and two being two acres plus or minus. Lot three, the existing home lot, being 3.11 acres. And lot four being 4.6 acres. We have a common drive easement servicing lots one and two. We have a separate drive, an existing drive for the existing home lot and a proposed drive for lot four. Again, with this particular situation, the common drive easement will be included with lot one, as was asked with the previous subdivision. We have obtained curb cut approvals from Mr. Petromal. And if you need those in writing, he would be happy to get those to you. We have also a maintenance agreement underway by Mr. Zwieben again for the common drive easement for lots one and two. The only thing that we have here that is out of the ordinary would be we are crossing a, with the driveway for lot number four will cross a small part of federal wetland. It is not state, it is not regulated, although it is shown on the state maps and on the resource mapper. It is over exaggerated in its shape and size on the mapper, which is understandable due to the fact that they are basing it off of aerials and so on. But that would be the only item that I would say is out of the ordinary here for this subdivision. We are, our lot sizes are, you know, greater than is what was required. We have no zoning issues, variances, or anything of that sort. And we have generally flat land with very nice home sites. So with that being said, it's just going through the motions here of making sure we cover everything and cross our Ts and dot our Is.
Okay. Questions from the board? Okay, hearing none. So this is a major subdivision, so two, two public hearings are required. I would like a motion to set the first public hearing for next month's meeting.
Almquist, you're, I'll make that motion.
Second. Discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 I'm sorry, Ms. Two seconded.
Yes, who seconded that motion?
I'll second it.
Okay. Okay, motion is carried, so we'll have the first public hearing next month. And it will be, I'm sure, via Zoom.
Quick question, while I have you guys here, generally, I mean, we want to, we're going, we are going to, you know, do some kind of septic, either approvals or letters of feasibility, which we have done in the past and had, you know, no issue with one way or the other, however you would like us to move forward with that, that would be something that we would like to have at least somewhat prepared for our first public hearing. So if the board is okay with a letter of feasibility for each lot from a PE, we can go ahead and do that, you know, immediately. And I think that is, you know, there's plenty of space on each lot for septic, so it's not going to be an issue of where we have more than ample space and ample topography for these septics. So that would just lead me in the right direction if that would work for you guys with feasibility letters.
That, that helps you with the deciding of the homes to not nail you down to a specific spot in each of the lots, right? So that's how that's helped.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. That's, that's, that's the key point is that once we get an approval, we can't move the house site.
I'm good, I'm good with that.
Yeah, I agree. That would, that's sufficient as far as I'm concerned. Any other concern of the board?
I think that'll work well.
Yeah. Yeah, we did that, Mike, with the project down by the river.
Yeah.
Call, right?
Yep, which actually, and just to give you a little recap on that, all of those septics were designed. Three of them have been built. And we have had great luck and the fourth lot is, is, the approval is underway right now for the septic and it is sold. So yes, it is, you know, we moved forward with septic designs and that all worked out well there. So needless to say, there was no issue in any way, shape, or form with that working. So I will have letters of feasibility for you for next, for the next meeting.
Okay, great.
And that's about it.
David, any comments?
No, I think Mike covered it. Just to note, it's not in the County Agricultural District and it's not referable to the County Planning Board because it's under the full lots, even though it's a major subdivision. So you've got everything you need.
Okay, great. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
One, one quick question while I have Mr. Emanuel in my office with me. When will, when will the town board meet with regards to his project?
Is it this Thursday, I believe? Gabby?
Seventeenth.
Next Thursday.
Next Thursday, okay, I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you, everybody. Have a good night. It's been a pleasure.
Okay, you too. Okay, next item then is urban precast. This is a site plan amendment. Again, it must be approved by the town board. So the planning board is an advisory to the town board for this project. It's pretty straightforward. The county was referred to the county, they had no statement of no impact from their perspective. And unless anybody has any questions, I see the applicant is online, so any, any questions or if not, we'll go to the resolution.
I'm good, Gary.
Okay, hearing none. David, would you like to read the resolution?
Whereas the applicant urban precast seeks site plan amendment approval for construction of a 3,533 square foot addition to an existing building. And whereas the applicant has submitted a complete site plan amendment application to the Town of Ulster Planning Board in coordination with the Ulster Town Board, including a submitted seeker short environmental assessment form. And whereas the Ulster Town Board has final review and approval authority for this application. And whereas the Ulster Town Board has referred this application to the Ulster County Planning Board, who returned a comment of no county impact. Now therefore be it resolved, based on the review of the application, the planning board recommends the town board make a finding that this application is for a non-residential facility involving less than 4,000 square feet, is a type two action under seeker and requires no further review or action under seeker. And be it further resolved, the planning board recommends that the town board approve this site plan amendment as presented in the complete application.
Can I have a motion to accept the resolution as read?
Almquist, I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
Okay. Discussion? And we'll do a roll call vote.
Ms. Hayner?
Yes.
Mr. Almquist?
Yes.
Mr. Deckard, is he? I don't see him. Mr. Stravopoulos?
Yes.
Chairman Mulligan?
Yes, and do we have Larry? I can appoint Dan Furman in his place if Larry's not. Looks like he signed off.
Yeah, I don't see him at all. So Mr. Furman?
That's a yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. You're welcome, Liz. Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas to all of you as well. Thank you.
Next item in business Albany seven LLC, site plan amendment and lot line deletion.
I'm here.
Hi, hi. Well, we did get comments from the county. Mr. Richie Cero, did you get those comments?
I don't think I did.
Okay.
Likewise, I didn't get any either.
Alright.
I sent them late this afternoon, so you might not have gotten them.
Yeah, I was coming back from the city and I did get the email, but I wasn't able to read it in the car. I just made it to my office.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Alright. Before I get to those, then there was also a comment from the DOT permitting engineer about the curb cut. Did you see that cause that web?
I, I did get a sketch from the highway department and I've got that shown on my drawing. If you let me share the screen, I can go over that and other changes that we did based on the comments from the planning board from last month.
Okay. Sure.
You have to let me share my screen.
That Gabby, is that your? Your function?
Trying now.
That's not my picture. Oh, here we go. I've got my own PDFs. Can I bring them up?
You'd be able to.
Yes, you should be able to.
Here we go. Can you see, can everybody see this? Can everybody see my screen?
No, I can't see it now.
I can't.
Alright, I don't know how to enlarge this, but that's my screen. Can you see it?
No, no.
Okay, I don't know how that works. Anyway, try to try to do it on, how can we make this larger?
Did we send the, the PDF over to Gabby?
I did, yeah.
Do you have that cap to bring it up?
Don't wait, see something now.
Here you go, you're on now.
Seeing something.
Yeah, something came up. Yeah, I just messed up.
There's another button you have to.
I don't believe I've ever received the newest plans.
Okay, I know I'm not seeing it. Can you see that? I just brought up mine.
No.
No. No. You should have a button on your desktop that says share. For shares. Alright.
I think you got it, ma'am.
Finally, okay. Okay, so, so at the last meeting, we were requested to show this line right here heavier. That's the lot line that's going to be removed, so we did that to make the heavier line. I'm showing a sewer line. I spoke to this gentleman from the sewer department and he gave me a map that shows the sewer right here. It's an eight inch transite line flowing towards the bottom of my drawing. So we're gonna set a manhole here. Let me see if I can enlarge this a little bit. So we're gonna, and we also requested by the highway department to move this island down. So we're moving the island down, we're keeping the existing sign where it is. And here's what the sign looks like now and here's the proposed sign from John, you can tell me what the name of that sign company was, but that's the design. Okay. Alright, let's get back to here. So the curb cut was going to be forty-five feet from the property corner and then a thirty-foot opening, which required us to move the island down. So we moved the island down, basically touching the sidewalk and the existing sign is staying right here where my cursor is. The highway department, we also requested that we remove, I think, three of these parking spaces. So if the board's okay with that, we'll have to ask for enough, you know, more of a relief from the zoning board. I don't know why he asked for this. There's a billboard sign here. I guess he felt that somebody's backing out of this location would interfere with them coming and going from the curb cut. So this is the curb cut. This is the island. The sewer is on, on the property right here, an eight-inch transide line heading south. We are proposing to run the sewer line, pick up the laundromat and set a manhole. My manhole's located just slightly off here. Set a manhole and make the connection to the existing sewer. We're also gonna have a manhole back here, pick up the back building as well. We're gonna install a grease trap because of the ice cream grease trap and then connecting to a manhole and then flowing down for a connection to the main sewer. The water and gas are in the streets, just slightly off the curb in the street. We're gonna bring them into the building here. I'm gonna show you on the floor plan. We're gonna create a mechanical room right in this area where the water and the gas comes in. At the last meeting, we requested to show a double painted line for all the parking stalls, which we did. We've got the dumpster here and there'll be a dumpster enclosure, which is this detail here, chain link fence. We're showing lighting around the buildings with mostly soffit lighting, two pole lights here and here. I don't have the photometrics back from the lighting consultant yet, but hope to have it soon. We're also showing soffit lights around the building on the back side and also on the overhang in the front. And, and that's about it for the site plan. Let me go to the building plan. Oh, we've got the landscaping plan, all the landscape material specified in the, and deep notes on how to do the planting and the soil enhancement and so on. Landscaping here and around the back of the building. I've included some details, utility details for the backflow prevention device, the sprinkler connection. And oh, these are mislabeled. This is the trench and this is the standard water, or the sprinkler connection. As far as the sprinkler is concerned, we, we won't be able to size that pipe until we get pressure and flow readings from the town water department. I had my mechanical engineer take a preliminary look at it and he's thinking a four-inch line would be needed for the, for the sprinkler system and for the use by the laundromat. So on the first floor of the building, we're going to take some space right here from the laundromat. The services are coming in. Let me go a bit larger on this. So the services are coming in from the street. This is the side, this is the side of the building that faces Ulster Avenue. So we're gonna have the gas meter on the outside, water meter inside with a remote read. This utility room is going to be for the water service and the gas service and HVAC equipment. We're gonna have an electric room in the back around this side. We're gonna come in. We're really not determined how we're gonna come in with the electric so far, but I imagine it's going to be from underground. Hmm, that's about it for that. Second floor hasn't changed. On the exterior, we were asked to enhance a little bit on the front of the building that faces Albany Avenue or Ulster Avenue. So this is from the parking lot, looking at the building, that's the front, what we're calling the front elevation. This is what I'm calling the right side elevation, but it's the side that faces Ulster Avenue. So we've added a window at the top of the stairs. This dash line represents the stairs and doorway going into the apartments on the second floor. So we've added a window into the stairwell, another window in the stairwell. I'm thinking maybe a laundromat sign here. This wall was, was plum with the second floor wall, but I moved that out and I've moved this exit door over to create more space for that mechanical room. So this is now what the front elevation looks like. And this part is twenty feet, twenty-four feet from the roadway. This upper part of the building in the back is twenty-nine feet away from the, from the roadway or from the property line. So there, these, this is what we're requesting the setback variance for. And that's it. I'm gonna go back to the site plan and answer any questions that, that you might have. Any questions? I think I got, I think I covered everything that we talked about last week, but if you have any questions, please, please, I'll be able to answer them.
Yeah, I'd like to make. No, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Alright, in moving that island, you're getting rid of that other entrance for cars, right? They won't, it won't look like a car entrance anymore, right? Exactly.
No, when, no, we, we extended this sidewalk. We requested also last week to extend this sidewalk and connect with the sidewalk that's existing along Ulster Avenue. So we're extending the sidewalk. We've gotten rid of that other curb cut that was here. There's only one curb cut now that's right here.
Okay, that's good. Just want to make sure a car wasn't mistakenly gonna pull into there, that's all.
No, they won't be able to.
Alright.
Alright, Mike, probably we went through the county comments that might generate some questions and answer others. I can go ahead and read these. This is as of December, December second from the Ulster County Planning Board. Summary, this is a proposal to demolish an existing structure and replace it with a new mixed-use building consisting of laundromat and nine apartments. An existing commercial building will be converted for an industrial use, James Ice Cream. The project is located at seven twenty-one dash seven twenty-three Ulster Avenue in the highway commercial zone. Following materials were received for review. Application plans, project review notes of ten eight twenty twenty, submitted documents form, referral form, landscape plan pending, lighting plan pending, sign specs pending, utilities plan pending, letter requesting lot line adjustment, survey color scheme. Following other recommendations, lighting. Lighting details are absent from the materials provided, required modification. Lighting details will need to be provided, including cut sheets, fixture locations and site lighting levels. The town statute requires the use of full cutoff LED fixtures and an average parking lot lighting of fewer than two and a half foot candles. So lighting is, I, I know you're adjusting lighting, you just spoke about it. Fortunately, that didn't get to the county for their first review.
Okay.
Next item on the desk.
I'd like to make a comment about the front entry. The folks living in those apartments have to walk across the front of the building before they go up the stairs. Is there any possibility of flipping the entire front design so that the entryway would be on the parking lot side?
What we've done was we kept the, the entrances on the back, what I'm calling the back of the building, right here and right here. So I was, I'm, we're projecting that the bulk of the parking for the apartments will be back next to the other building and they would walk along this back part of the building, come up the stairs this way and then up the stairs this way. We could even flip this design so that their entrances towards the back. The whole intent was to keep their entrances away from the front and give them more privacy in terms of getting into their, getting entrance into the building along this back side. Because there's an existing roadway there. I'm gonna put landscaping along there. It'd be kind of like a, almost like a protected walkway along the back of the building to get up the stairs here or here. And this, this unit, we could actually.
Your tenant parking will be at the, in the rear of the, of the lot then?
Exactly.
Well, I'm, I'm assuming most of this is gonna be used by the laundromat and probably most of this. These people are gonna wanna park near the laundromat. This is more private, I would assume. If I were renting here, I would wanna park my car back here away from the crowd and away from possible door dings and so on. And then walk along this backside and come in to the entrance to the apartments.
Okay, looking at that, I understand what you're doing. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Alright, the next item was pedestrian access, which you've basically addressed, but their language, the proposed sidewalk at the front of the building does not appear to connect to the sidewalk adjoining the street. Well, obviously, it does now, and that was a required modification. A direct pedestrian cross connection from the sidewalk system along Ulster Avenue should be provided to tie in with the site's internal sidewalk. So that's, that's been done. Landscaping, the applicant is proposing a structure that orients toward the parking lot rather than Ulster Avenue, leaving the view of a secondary entrance and an enclosed staircase as the visible portions of the site from the road, as Frank just mentioned. This represents a very blank frontage to the street. Landscaping and/or other architectural changes to the building should be considered to enhance the frontage. We note that the building does represent an improvement to the current structure. Required modification, absence, absent an alternative design that brings the main access toward the streetscape, use of street trees to break up the mass and scale of the building when the road is recommended.
What we could do is I've also, this roof line here, that's sort of the front overhang at the, what I'm calling the front of the building. I've extended that along and extended it just for the one-foot overhang along here to break up the height of this piece of the building. And there will be like soffit, soffit lights in here to light down. We could do a, you know, a tree or some landscaping right in front of this to sort of, you know, you know, enhance it with some landscaping and so on. There'd be low planting along in here. I didn't wanna put in anything too high because of the sight line from the entrance, you know, down here looking north along Ulster Avenue. And here's where that little, the back alleyway or back walkway would be where I'm showing this person. Now here's the property line, the north property line. We're ten feet away and this is where, you know, assumed that the people would walk to along the back of the building and up the stairs to their apartment. But we could do something here. I'll work on that this week and we'll see.
I believe, I believe that they recommended, that they didn't want a bunch of trees growing up there because you wanna have a good visual view pulling out of the property. So we thought it was ideal to put the dwarf landscaping there, not high trees. So whatever somebody's pulling out of the lot, they have beautiful visual view e- either way, north or south, coming out.
Okay, well.
We'll defer to the board on that, you know, you know, but John's right. There's, you know, a car waiting here to pull out. He's gonna be looking in that direction for oncoming traffic. So we're keeping this all pretty much low in here.
Right.
They, they were concerned about the sign. The existing sign is a three-panel sign. And that's why we made it a two-panel sign. When there's two panels there, you can see. You're pulling up out of there, pulling out of there, you got great visual view. You don't wanna put a tree that can grow ten, fifteen years from now that could block the view. If we have a dwarf trees there that are pretty, we'll put some color to them. That'll, that'll pop. We don't want nothing with any height, so we have good visual view up and down. As you could see through that sign as, as you're looking at it right now, that'll always be like that, but it'll be a little bit nicer, a little bit of color to it. It'll be a lower type of landscaping.
Well, my thought is, as you look at that very picture, if there were a tree like right in front of the Arcall sign, I don't think it would interfere.
Over here?
Yeah, you know, I don't think it would interfere. It depends on how high the branches were.
Yeah, I mean, I'll do whatever you guys want me to do. I thought you wanted something with, with visual view we discussed before. And I thought that dwarf landscaping was the way to go, but whatever's needed, that, that's easily to do.
Yeah, what, I mean, at this point, we're just trying to address some of the county's required modifications, but.
While we're on the topic of the sign, it's not a monument.
Well, that's my next point. I, I think, I, I believe it exceeds the heights in the code. But.
Wouldn't a monument, wouldn't a monument sign tend to block the view of the highway?
I agree. I, I think in this case, we may have to make.
Well, we had proposed to move it north at the last meeting.
More towards the Arcall sign.
More towards the Arcall sign, so that when the cars reach the road, I can understand wanting to do, you know, the post for, for the visual. The problem is, is that, you know, we're not doing post signs. Everything is, is being unified to monument all up and down the corridor.
Part of the corridor enhancement plan, correct? Alright. We're gonna have to take a look at that.
It's possible the sign panels could be made a little bit narrower so that you could make the height requirement, yet it had clearance space under the lower sign to be able to look up the. so that you could make the, the height requirement, yet have clearance space under the, the lower sign, to be able to look up the nine W for a, a Albany Avenue.
That's a good idea.
What was that? I didn't get that.
Make the panels for the two signs a little bit narrower in height so that you can be able to look underneath the ba, the bottom panel as you're going up. Maybe some of these big four-wheelers that people drive might have a problem there, but most, most sedans should be able to peer underneath the lower sign.
Okay.
Well, this, this, this rendering shows the, the actual, the other, the existing driveway that's gonna be eliminated, so this sign would be actually farther up than where it's shown now, as, you know, in the rendering, right, it would be up here somewhere.
No, this is the driveway that's gonna go away.
Yeah.
The sign is in the same location, we're just pushing the island further north.
Okay, I thought the sign was moving with it.
Nope, uh.
Can the sign move with it?
There's the sign, we're moving the island back.
Oh, yeah.
John.
Yes, right here, we moved the sign over when we spoke with uh the DOT, wanted that opening, and it was their idea to slide that over that way to block that position for cars going, that Dan mentioned earlier, and then leaves this open. And when we slid that over, we noticed the sign was on the end, so it was like, okay, great, it, it fits in with that, and it's block, blocking anything, we got the visual. We're just hoping to see what you guys thought about it.
But I mean, can the sign move north? If we were gonna do the, the um, the monument sign, and it would block the view from where it sits right now, could it move north a little bit?
Yeah, I, I, I mean, yeah, I mean, anything is possible, wh, you know, sure. Sure, if we move it, can we move it past the sidewalk and put it there? I mean, yeah, we, 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 we could do that.
All right, um.
If it, I'm sorry, Gary?
No, I'm, go ahead.
No, I, I didn't know, so what, where it's at right now, how, i- is that, is that a problem, and if so, how?
Well, it's. It has to be a different type of sign than what's in the picture.
It, it's a problem in, in that it doesn't comply with code and, and the uh
Gotcha.
Monument sign.
So we need to get a monument.
Bottom of the sign won't be there with the new type of sign, but the type of sign that's gonna conform with the, with the corridor plan, that, that hole that you can view through won't be there, so.
Got it.
That's why I'm saying maybe it, if it could move north a little bit, then that might not be an issue.
I love that idea. I love that.
I believe the to, the, the max height is eight feet, but I'll, I'll check that.
Yeah.
That's correct. Add the code open.
The sign could be on either side of the, of the new sidewalk, on the, on the side plan. Up near the building.
Right here?
It has a maximum height of eight feet, by the way.
So monument sign max is eight feet?
Got it.
Fifty square feet.
Max eight feet.
Right, Gabby, fifty square feet total.
That fifty square feet per. I'd have to check on the zoning, I don't have that, yeah, Warren has that, but I, I, yeah, I know for sure it's eight feet in height though. Maximum.
Fifty square feet per side?
It's, it's per side.
It's per side, yes.
The other thing you might do, if you're talking about a tree or some large shrub, would be put it at the northeast corner of the building by the.
Right here?
A little bit, yeah, in that area, because if that way it would screen that walkway for people coming down past the building, going up the stairs.
Okay, we could do that.
Yeah, like that, it's a good idea.
Yeah.
Nice sweeping cherry or something.
Okay, well, Warren's looking up the sign code. We'll keep moving on. Um, the next item on the county, variances and zoning amendments. Absent and alternative approach to this development and allowing multifamily housing in the highway commercial zone, variances for use, multifamily in the HC zone for more than four units, and a front yard variance will need to be referred to the Ulster County Planning Board for review. The Ulster County Planning Board believes this is an opportunity for the town to consider multifamily developments as an allowed use, whether by site plan or a special permit, given the high demand for rental housing and the relatively weak demand for retail. Ulster County housing studies have shown that the greatest need for rental housing is at levels below eighty percent of the area median income, and developments such as this could play a part in filling that demand. Some considerations should be given to inclusion and affordability as part of granting the need use, the needed use variance. Required modification, both variances will require referral to the Ulster County Planning Board. The proposal itself will hinge on the approval of use variance. Longer term, a zoning amendment to allow multifamily in the highway commercial zone and a look at design guidelines for the highway commercial district along Albany Avenue could render the need for these variances moot. Advisory comment, given the overwhelming need for affordable housing alternatives throughout the county, the Ulster County Planning Board strongly supports the development of multifamily housing in the highway commercial, potentially adjoining LC zoning district two. While not applicable currently to this area, the town has within its town code standards for a traditional neighborhood developed an overlay district, TNDOD, which you can draw from to apply in the corridor. The TNDOD contains regulations regarding design guidelines, affordable housing provisions, and standards for mixed-use buildings within its scope. Similar standards could be utilized to develop special permit standards for the highway commercial and/or LC zones, or a similar framework could be utilized for the creation of a new overlay district that focuses on long-term design goals for the community along this corridor, while at the same time meeting the demands for multifamily housing and inclusionary zoning. So, um, where do we stand with this zone at? The uh, the application to this EVA, that's tomorrow night, right?
Tomorrow night, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. So, they're saying they need, that needs to go back to the county once those are decided um, for their review, along with the um, the uh lighting and signage. Signage being.
Gary, are they, are they saying that if the town of Ulster gives, grants the variances after the, after the variances are granted, if, if they are, then it goes to the county for them to review again? I mean, you know, based for the variances, or?
Yeah, that's my understanding, um.
Okay.
I thought the county was more concerned about the lighting and the landscaping uh detail that they didn't see, cuz they didn't see this updated plan, apparently. And the sidewalk detail.
They just wanna see that the variances are done.
Right.
Right.
Okay.
Exactly.
All right.
It is fifty square feet on the sign, by the way, the freestanding sign, as well as each facade wall sign.
Okay, so, clarify that's per side, right, Gab?
Fifty square feet per side, maximum of eight feet tall.
Got it.
Gabby, did you say that the, the, a wall sign could also be fifty square feet?
Correct, per side, so the front, both sides and the rear, each have to be fifty square feet apiece, no larger.
We could have a mon, we, we could have a monument sign with two sides at fifty square feet and a wall sign on the building at fifty square feet? Is that what it's saying?
Uh, if I'm not mistaken, yes, I'd have to double check for sure, but yes, I believe so.
Well, it's one square foot for two linear feet, max fifty square feet.
Yes, that's right.
Two, two linear feet of what, Warren?
Two linear feet of storefrontage, you're allowed one square foot.
Okay.
With a maximum of fifty square feet.
So we're calling the side of this building the front?
If you were gonna put the sign facing Ulster Avenue, that would be the building side that you would measure. If you wanted to put the sign in the parking lot, then that would be the side you would measure.
Okay. It's a building front or a property frontage?
Building.
Build it.
Okay.
Two linear equals one square, correct, Warren?
Correct.
Very good.
All right, so the next item was signage, um, signage details are absent from the materials provided, required modification. Signage details will need to be provided for the town's review. All signage should conform to the standards of the town zoning statute. So that, yeah, signage has to go back to the county uh as well as lighting and of course the uh, the determination of the ZVA. And let's see, they have one other com, well, two other comments. Internal circulation, uh based on materials provided, appears vehicles traversing around the existing structure intended for industrial use, the back building, the rear building, may have difficulty completing this movement without crossing over proposed parking spaces located behind the building. Um, they just had an advisory comment to verify the site can handle truck turning movements um behind the buildings.
Oh, well, the uh, the dash line that I'm showing there was on the survey, so that, that's probably just a gravel uh roadway that's existing. Um, John, you're not, you're not, you're not having any big trucks go back there, are you?
No.
Which size are they, like a?
We have a van, our van goes, the van that we keep parked out in the front at the moment, our vans go back and that's, and we'll be loading and going.
Yeah, they might be look, looking at just this dotted line, I don't know, going into the, to the.
Yeah, that, that, that's off the existing survey, that, oh, survey, that was in.
I'm the town rep of the County Planning Board, and when the, I, since I'm voting on the town board, I cannot talk during any of the discussion about the, the site at the county meeting. So I can't explain anything as these guys go off on a tilt. They saw manufacturing and they're looking at eighteen-wheelers. Finally broke in and said, guys, this is for Jane's Ice Cream. No big trucks, mostly panels. So they kind of relaxed a little bit. I think that comment that's written there is still some of the comments that they noted when they were talking eighteen-wheelers.
Right, thank you, Frank.
Um, if, I'm gonna take this dash line off, cuz we're gonna be, you know, surfacing this whole back area anyway.
Okay.
That's a good thing to do.
Nice.
Um, their, their final comment was about the dumpster, it, it said a single dumpster is indicated. Um, that second dumpster there was probably be necessary, given the, the industrial use of the site. Um, it looks to me like you're proposing two dumpsters.
Yeah.
Down here.
They might, they might have seen the previous version of the site plan where we might have been showing one dumpster.
Okay, so, so that's the county's comments, um.
Easy enough.
So.
We'll work on it.
Yeah, okay. Um.
Sierra, if you wanna send me what you have tomorrow, so I have everything.
Say again? Yeah, I don't have that kind of.
No, if you could just send me the plan that you're showing right now to me tomorrow, just so I have it in my records.
I sent it this afternoon, you should have it, but I'll send it to you tomorrow. I'm gonna work on, I'm gonna work on some of this, we're gonna change some of this, so uh we'll do that now, seventeen, in a couple days.
Okay, sounds good.
Right here, this one right here you have, I sent it today.
Okay, I'll check my email in the morning, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
So we, we have the other issue of deleting the lot line, but um it's the recommendation of uh, of David that we, we wait until this uh, this is more complete, till we have the, the final county comments, that they've gotten everything they need. So, that's kind of where we're at. David, any, any additional comments?
Well, I think the project hinges on that use variance.
Yeah, right.
Uh, as the county noted and the board knows.
Yeah. Um, any other comments or questions from the board?
Hey, Gary, can I note that uh, with the DOT uh comments, losing the three spaces there.
Oh, yes, right.
You're gonna, you're gonna have to amend your request to the zoning board and I guess at this point, the day of the meeting.
Well, I'll do that tomorrow with you, Gabby, okay?
A- and this is Jeffrey Ring, I'm, I'm the zoning chair, I believe this is on the docket for tomorrow.
Yes, it is.
Yep.
So they, they're gonna have a third request, Jeffrey, about the uh, meeting the parking requirement.
Okay, I'll, I'll take a look at that with Gabby tomorrow, just to make sure we understand the three variances, okay?
That works.
Gary, so I, Gary, I don't know if the county, if the planning board wants to comment to the ZVA about the parking or not.
Um. Yes, so uh what's the thoughts of the board? Um, we're gonna lose three spots there uh closest to Albany Avenue.
And then the southeast corner there.
Yeah.
Did, did you guys pick up an additional spot by the loading dock, by the uh, the downstairs apartment?
Yeah, we did pick up an extra one here.
Um, you know, I like.
Loss of two.
Well, we lost one here and we lost one here, so I think we ended up net being the same as what we were prior to making these adjustments. Uh, but I'll recalculate everything tomorrow, I'll adjust the uh, the chart here as far as parking is concerned, what we have, and then we'll know how many we're gonna have to ask for. We'll get rid of these three.
So, Sierra, can you go back and, and can we look at the required and what's, what's proposed? Just so we're all on the same page.
So we had, and as far as laundromat is concerned, we had one space for every two washers, that gave us, that required thirty-two. The apartments were two and a half spaces per dwelling unit, that gave us twenty-two point five. The manufacturing was one per every five hundred square feet, which was seven point two, which made a total of sixty-two cars. And we had, we were able to meet that, if my math is correct. Uh, we still had the three handicapped and we had fifty-nine regular, which gave us the sixty-two. So we, we, up to this point, we hadn't asked for a um parking variance.
Right, and now, now you're losing two.
Yeah, now we're gonna have to ask for it.
But also the variable that needs to be considered, which I think one of the members brought up last time. These apartments are one-bedroom apartments, and the zoning says two and a half spaces per one bedroom. There's not many one-bedroom apartments that are using two and a half spaces per nine, so we have twenty-two and a half. So we do have a lot of extra spaces based on one-bedroom apartment usage, so that's, that's something to consider.
Right. Okay.
The board, so, in some townships, the um, the planning board has the ability to waive uh parking or, you, you know, limited amount of parking, is that, is, is that, that's not the case in the town of Ulster?
I, I don't have the answer to that, perhaps Jason does? I don't know.
I think we do, but I, my suggestion is since this is um, before the zoning board tomorrow night, we're looking for two variances, I think it'd just be easier to um, request a variance for parking.
Yeah.
Okay.
Makes sense.
We'll do, we'll do it that way.
Jason, thank you.
Okay.
Welcome.
Before we leave this, uh, any other questions from either the applicant or question or comments from the board members?
I do have a, I can weigh in on the um, reduction of parking requirements. Um, planning board, a town board can waive off-street parking study prepared by a qualified traffic engineer or transportation planner, and recommendations of the town planner or consulting traffic engineer may grant a conditional reduction of the. reduction of the total number of required off-street parking spaces subject to certain conditions. So it is, it is the planning board or the town board can reduce part of parking spaces by quite a bit. So if there's any supporting documentation that you could present stating that, you know, they're one bedroom, the number of cars, and so on and so forth. Because you're only asking for two, not like you're asking for half.
Yeah.
Well, the the requirement is per dwelling unit, it doesn't say what size dwelling unit. It could have been, you know, it could have been a three bedroom apartment and you're still asking for two and a half spaces. So I think that's just a judgment call on on the board's part.
Yeah, and I, I personally, I mean, I think that's a compelling argument that they're one bedroom apartments and probably aren't gonna need two and a half spaces per unit.
Warren, isn't there a definition of dwelling unit in the code?
If I didn't know there was gonna be a quiz, I would have studied.
If it was two, two spaces per dwelling unit, we would only require it to be the half eighteen, which would give us a difference of four and a half spaces. You know, just throwing that out there.
The dwelling unit. One or more rooms designed occupied intended for occupancy as a separate living quarters with cooking, sleeping, sanitary facilities provided within the dwelling unit for the exclusive use of a single family maintaining a household.
Okay, so that doesn't go by bedroom?
Doesn't help us at all.
Thank you. We'll give you an A.
You know, the county is, the county is encouraging, you know, to view the opportunity to provide housing, you know, rental units. So I would think the zoning board would take that into account also as far as the two and a half spaces per unit in rendering that decision. They also wanted you to look at the the prospect of affordability in your, in your housing, how that's designated, how that, I'm not sure. I think basically they're saying to consider having some units as quote unquote affordable. So putting that out there. Okay, any other questions, comments?
I'm good.
I'm good.
Alright. Thank you gentlemen.
Alright, we'll make these changes and resubmit.
Okay, great.
Thank you guys for your time and if I don't see you before the holidays, Merry Christmas to all of you and your families.
Merry Christmas everybody.
Thank you too.
Merry Christmas guys.
Thank you guys.
See you next month. Okay. Next item of business, Morgan Coy, site plan on 36 Sawkill Road.
Alright, can you hear me?
Yes.
Alright, well, nice to meet you all. This is the beginning of trying to build a warehouse over on Sawkill. Just two lots, which I bought from the hospital eight months ago. Just over the overpass, over 587. On the right hand side of your leaving Kingston. It was old farmland for a while, maybe it was even a golf course. There's soccer fields on the other side. If that sort of puts it into perspective for you, there's a couple of medical buildings, there's the methadone clinic and another medical building. And this is the field right behind it. So the, the idea here is, and I can try to do a screen share in a minute of what we're proposing to do here. Eight thousand square foot warehouse, which does not currently have a specific use, but want to put some loading docks in there so that we can bring, you know, light, light manufacturing into that, which is what the zoning is appropriate for. And, you know, as, I think, as I'm sure you're all aware of, there's sort of a lack of, of this kind of warehouse available. Some of it exists, but it's all probably 30, 40 years old. It's a pretty good location, close to 87. Also, there's a pre, like back in 1987, when the hospital bought it, they did get approval for the road to be connected to Barbrandt. To connect that fully, to make better access and so it won't fully like tie up the neighborhood from this sort of overly disruptive traffic. Not that I'm proposing a major use here, starting small, this is like what I'm capable of, of building right now. The one piece that is important, which I've talked to the Ulster County Sewer Department about, is that there is a pump station right across the highway. You can, you can see it, it's probably about 120 feet from the, like it just basically crosses over to the highway and there is capacity to this pump station to make this connected to the sewer, the actual sewer system of Ulster County, or not Ulster County, town of Ulster. Which would be hugely beneficial because currently what is there, while there's plenty of space to actually put a septic field, because it's in the, the building area that I'm looking at is in the 500 year floodplain, but you would still have to do the most, the most rudimentary above ground septic system versus being able to connect it, doing a direct pour drill over to the pump station and connect it in. And for a warehouse use, which is relatively light, we're not talking about doing residential usage or any kind of, you know, hospitality or anything like that, means that we could actually have a much less disruptive sewer connection, which, which I think there's some interest also in connecting that area over there to some kind of municipal sewer system. And so the fact that it's possible is kind of nice, so. Yeah, I mean, if you have questions for me, I'd love to show you sort of what we're looking at here. It's one acre with appropriate parking for a light industrial use, pretty attractive warehouse. It looks fancy, but it's not that fancy as far as like what we're talking about. It is a metal warehouse structure. We do have some insulated glass that makes it kind of like elevates the look of it a little bit and a little bit of you know, some angles that are not necessarily traditional, but that has more to do with the fact that we do like to try to shoot for some aesthetics, but, but also we're, it's a metal building. And, you know, we'd love to be able to throw some solar on the roof, so we will engineer it for that appropriately. But besides that, it's, it's a warehouse. So if you have questions for me, I'd love to answer them for you.
Yeah, could you put up?
Yep.
On your screen? Site plan?
Would you like to see the renderings or site plan? What's your?
Site plan first, but then rendering.
Here's our first piece of site plan. You know, you can see we threw the some trees on there, appropriate parking, some projected parking for the future. I mean, this is 13 acres, probably about about seven or eight is in the 500 year floodplain. So while that doesn't require any extra building, we, you know, requirements, we will elevate it. It, it helps us with the loading dock area, but also, you know, who knows what 500 year floodplain actually looks like these days, so. But, but as far as parking goes, that still gives us plenty of possibilities for being able to park again for future development. Let's see. There's a, can you see that one? Does that work out for?
Yes.
Sort of the, like I said, looks fairly fancy, but you know, that's sort of wood exterior. Let's see, the loading docks. Let's see. Get you to, it's more of the So there's the, you can see the 500 year floodplain is in the darker zone here. So you can see only this area right here is in the 100 year floodplain. And for this proposed use will be right right around here where I'm circling.
We might not be seeing the same.
Oh.
Plan. I'm seeing the initial 8,000 square foot warehouse.
Oh, you didn't see any of those pictures?
No.
Sorry about that. Oh, it's, it's just that it, it alright. I did ask my, my son to teach me how to do this today, so I apologize for for it not being super smooth. Alright, so you only saw that first picture?
Yes.
Alright, I'm sorry about that. Alright, let's see.
Gary, it's Dave, Gabby sent around to everybody the a screenshot from those FEMA maps that I
Yes.
Passed on to her, so everyone should have that.
Yeah.
Sorry, it said that I was doing screen sharing for all of that, so I apologize.
Alright, well, we can move on.
I'm still working on it, but please, please ask me questions and I'll, I'll try to give you something that'll be more meaningful since I
So what, what's your overall plan for that site? There's, you know, there's quite a bit of acreage. As you said, this is your, your first building, but you envision other warehouse structures on the rest of the parcel?
Well, my goal is, is to be realistic about what I can do. So what I believe is that, you know, as far as, as far as what I see the need of did you see that?
Yes. Yeah, that's got to be it.
From, from working in Kingston for the past five years or so, I have you know, noticed that there's definitely a need and desire for places for people to be able to manufacture things, small, small manufacturing and warehouse space. People who want to start small businesses and do and create business, basically. So you know, when I saw this piece of property from the, from the, from the hospital that they'd had for, you know, almost 30 years, basically zoned appropriately. That was close to the highway. This to me said, this is a good opportunity to create some more of this space. So the way I see it is trying to make opportunities for people to start small businesses or, or build small businesses and offer that space. So, you know, and zoning and parking is, is huge. So looking at, at some land that was zoned for that and is in a pretty good space for it, that's my goal, is basically to say, let's look at, let's look at how we can build relatively affordable space and offer that to people to try to build some businesses. So that's, that's my goal. And that's sort of, but I, but I also have to look at it realistically about what I can afford, and so that's why I'm starting with this size, looking at ways to do it with, that has a a realistic way to make it affordable, so that looking at, at solar, looking at connecting it to the municipal sewer system, there's already water there. You know, it's a, it's a location space and so basically what I'm looking at is essentially looking at one warehouse first, potentially another one that I could split into smaller spaces, 2,000 square foot. But offering people an opportunity to build small businesses.
Thank you. Again, we are acting in the capacity of advisory to the town board, which will have final approval for this project. David has suggested this is a seeker enlisted action. We could tonight do a referral to the town board to become lead agency and declare this as a seeker enlisted action. Let's see, we've talked about your utility plan, stormwater plan. Probably will have to be referred to the town engineer once that's established.
Yeah.
Also refer to the highway water and sewer departments, you already talked sewer.
Yeah.
Okay.
Sorry, I figured out, can you see that one? Where you're starting to see like the the, you can see this one, initial one acre right here, right?
Yeah.
And this red line sort of represents where the sewer connection. And yes, I've, I've begun the conversations with, you know, I had begun this before the pandemic. And then things slowed considerably. But, but this would be kind of the connection to the sewer, and you can see this, this round curve right here? Can you see my cursor following that?
Yeah.
So that's what was approved for the highway department, is that that was the original road that the, that the hospital had approved. So the highway department said, if you were asking for this today, it would never happen, but the fact that it was approved gives you much more of a, an actual possibility because that's the way it was, it was planned. So we've got some landscaping here, sorry that took me a while to get this. And some lighting elements.
Right. You're aware that lighting needs to be full cutoff, dark sky compliant?
Yep. Potential solar panel. Kind of see more of the what we're looking at here, ramp. Garage doors. And I did connect with the parks department today about looking for whether there were any archaeological concerns with the area, that that has been filed with them and we'll, we'll be working on that. I know this, this land was farmed. I know this, this land was farmed for. Generations, so I would be surprised if that were the case, however. You know, due diligence is.
I think it's proximity to the river is what's triggering it.
Sure, yeah.
Gary, it's Dave again. So you could, you, you could, I drafted a resolution. For the referral to the town board to take lead agency under seeker, you could also. Take it a step further and have them send it to Ulster County. I just, it's up to the planning board on whether you think it's ready. But he's got those other renderings that he just shared. So it might be the full package. I did have a question on those thirteen spaces that are direct accessing the lane. Have you? I'm, I'm wondering if the. Planning board, what they think of that and if the.
Right there.
Highway superintendent's gonna want that.
Right, because you're saying, this is right here, they're not coming in to this.
Particularly if it's ultimately maybe a road. Through a road.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Well, I think the road line would be right there, so I don't know where, but yeah, I think that's worth. Because you can see right here, there's the, there's the line, and so there seems to be a buffer.
Oh, so there you're showing a lot lines.
Any idea what the, how many feet that is?
Well, they said that the road's fifty feet right here, so that does seem wider than. Then what we required for the two lane road. But, but, you know, we definitely need to check that.
Well, yeah, it's, it's in the parking code under access. In no case shall parking areas be designed to require or encourage cars back into a public street.
Right, there's a, there's gonna be a barrier. I mean, if this is fifty feet right here to the back. You can see the current, the turn right there, I just don't imagine that's, there's gonna be a, there'll be a barrier.
Well, if you. County will weigh in on that very early.
You'd have, I don't know, Gabby, what's he got? Solid three weeks before the January planning board meeting, right, county?
Yeah, I think they meet on the sixth, if I'm remembering correctly from earlier.
If you could, if you, because the county would certainly pick up that comment, if you want, if you could show that. And you've got three weeks to show it, plus get all these other renderings in a package, we. Gary, the, you could recommend the town board send that package to the county planning board.
I, I'm fine with that if, if Mr. Coy, if you think you can have it complete by then.
Sure, I mean, you're just saying to make sure that there's a detail to, to make it clear that this element. I mean, the, the reality is that we're not. Ready to propose that, like, the road. Yet, because that's. Quite a, I mean, this. This element right here. For this use right here doesn't require us to build this, the full road quite yet. You know, that is the plan, and ultimately to, to. Designate this road as a, to give it over to the town. I think that was always the plan from the hospital as well. But for this current use of a eight thousand square foot warehouse. Our parking and driving, you know, our parking flow is quite small. For what we're looking at, you know, ultimately, I would like to make this, this road go through all the way to. Barbarosa. But. Currently, I don't think that's necessary. I mean, unless you feel like. Those two things are, you know, because there's already two buildings here, the, the reason, part of the reasoning. For designing this plan here was to say, what can we do right now with? With the money that we have and infrastructure that we're. Already allowed here, you know, so like basically, this means that we develop an acre. Of property. Knowing that there's more that can happen in the future. But also recognizing our current restraints about what we're actually able to do, so. This use feels significant and. A meaningful. Investment in infrastructure, but not saying we're gonna dive into a. You know, multi-million dollar project, because it's just not feasible right now. So trying to say, how can we keep this? You know. Under a million dollars, basically is what I'm trying to do. And this is what I've come up with. If we, if we dive into looking at. A full connection of this road system and, you know, multiple buildings, then. We're, we're jumping into a, quite a massive development, and that's. Just not, just not where I'm at right now.
Yeah, and, and I don't think the planning board is, is asking for that. But I, you know, people who go into Kingston Hospital, that could, that could be an issue with the county as far as those cars backing into that road as wide as it. Since that's an active road in, into. The Kingston Hospital building, so just be prepared for that.
And it is a long-term plan. I mean, you know, honestly, connecting that road may be. You know, what we need to do. So I'm not saying that that's a deal breaker for me, I'm just, I'm just saying that's. Trying to, the thing, what I'm trying to balance.
What kind of truck traffic are we thinking of adding to Salk Hill Road there?
I don't think it's gonna be very big, I mean.
That was, popped into my head when you said warehouse there, and I'm thinking, big, slow. Wide turning trucks on Salk Hill Road. I, I love the idea, I love that you want to build this, I, I love the reason you want to build it. I really like that. The thought of having big tractor trailers turning on to Salk Hill Road.
Oh, yeah.
You do realize that, Dan, you do realize what's farther up the road is Albany Avenue Garage?
There's quite.
Well, that's what I mean, do we want to add? I guess not, yeah, no, you're right there.
And we're talking about an eight thousand square foot warehouse. If this was a hundred thousand square foot, and I'm talking about putting in a Amazon warehouse here.
Yeah, that would be.
But.
You're right, eight thousand square foot, it's the word warehouse, I guess, but yeah, no, you're good.
I get you, but there's, you know, there's already a significant chunk, and I don't think that this is, I'm not trying to. Do a, a mega project here. This is, that's my point, I mean. You know, I'm, I'm limited, so it's kind of like, what can we do, you know?
Any other comments, questions? Alright, we do have a resolution to refer this to the town board. And. Recommend they refer it to the Ulster County Planning Board. If the board feels it's a complete package for the county planning board.
I think the one thing you're going to have to define is the, the backing space out of those thirteen parking lots. Before you hit the actual pavement of the road. Room to make a turn without having to do it on, on the. Town highway. That'll. Definitely trigger a comment from the county.
I got you.
And do you, how do you? You, you've got that sheet that shows the prospective sewer connection. The county's gonna probably want to know where you're at with that. And see that sheet or. I don't know if in three weeks you can. Represent you're gonna do that, or?
Well, I mean, here, the thing was that I, I talked with the. I talked with Ulster County. Sewer Department, probably about eight months ago. Maybe nine months ago, right before, you know, it was maybe a month or two before the pandemic. Hit us, and. It was a good conversation, it was a surprisingly good conversation, because initially I looked at this space as a place where I was gonna have to do above-ground septic. And. Between the, the sewer department and. And the engineers who did the surveys for me. They said, you know, you're so close to this pump station, we think that you should actually seriously consider doing a direct bore. And making this connection there. So I went down this road before I bought this property, actually, because. That was meaningful to me. I was like, great, if I can connect to public sewer, that's huge, that makes a big difference, and there's cost for me. But it actually works out to be similar to putting in one of these above-ground. Septic systems, which are antiquated and, and hugely expensive, so. I'm, he basically said to come to you, to come to the planning board. First, so that's why, you know, it's, it's one of these, you know, multi-pronged. Conversations where I'm really trying to align a bunch of different. People together to, to figure out how to, how to move on it, because. You know, it has to go across the federal highway, which I thought was gonna be a total deal breaker, but because the. There is a relationship between. The sewer. Ulster County Sewer and the, and the. You know, federal highway department. Because of eighty-seven, he was like, I think we can make this happen, so, but he was like, go to the planning board first. So that we can. You know, get it rolling. So I, I'm expecting this to take some time. I'm not sure how, how quickly I can do it. I'm not gonna say I can pull it off in three weeks, but I do just want to, I'm just trying to align. All of the, all of the agencies that are involved here, so that progress can be made.
Yeah, the. There's a state law requirement that projects like this have to be referred to the county planning board for comment. And if you were listening to an earlier. Project review, we don't want you to get hung up on. Their feeling like they don't have everything. Then you end up getting a mandatory recommendation that they, you send them more materials later on anyway. So, and they need, Gabby, a two-week. Advance before a meeting to get the material?
Or something like this, they would need two weeks, yeah?
So that gives you essentially three weeks to. Pull together. All these sheets that you showed us quickly.
Right.
If you're comfortable with that, well.
I mean, I'll give it a try, I'll give it a try.
Put it in the resolution, Gary.
I mean, we're on the holidays too, so I know everything's, you know, everything's a mess right now anyway, so.
I have it in the draft resolution now to recommend referral to the county, it's, we could work with you. Staff in the, in the office could make sure you've got everything they think you need.
Well, and if, if he's not ready, I mean, we'll just, just we'll have to go till next month.
That, that county board only meets once a month as well, so. You don't make the later this month filing with them, you have to wait another month.
Yeah.
County meets the first Wednesday of every month. So getting together for the first Wednesday in January with Christmas and New Year's built in there. December does, or January meeting does not sound plausible.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I agree.
Well, I mean, I'm, I'm interested in just trying to get it rolling, you know, I mean, I bought, I bought this land, I'm gonna try to make this happen, so. I recognize that there are gonna be, there are gonna be some. Things that slow it down, so, I mean, that's what we, that's the world we live in right now, and it's just about trying to. Keep it going, so I'm, I'm, you know, I'm. Gonna give it a shot, so I, 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 I'm open to your. You know, feedback and, and obviously you know what. You know, what can be problems here? I'm trying to operate within what is. An accepted use of this space, and this has been, you know, zoned appropriately and vacant for. You know, thirty, almost thirty years at least, so trying to, trying to look at the, how we can, how we can bring a little bit of. Use to it, so.
Well, we'll, we'll get the ball rolling by referring it to the town. And David, I mean, we, we could, I mean, we could keep the language that you have in the draft as far as referring to the county, but. If Mr. Coy communicates to the town, look, I'm not ready for next month, then. You know, there's no. Nothing lost, right?
County would rather see a full package than having to come.
Yeah, right, so I, I, I think, yeah, I, I think it's doubtful that'll be ready for next. The next county planning board meeting, but. Rather than have to do a separate motion, would we need, when they're ready to refer to the county, or is that just something the town would decide? At some point on their own?
I believe the town just recommends it to go to county, they don't set a timeframe on it. Jason could weigh in.
Right, so if we just. Read the resolution with, with that included, then the, the town board will use their discretion and want to refer.
Okay, you ready?
Okay. Alright. David would like to read the resolution.
Whereas the applicant Morgan Coy seeks site plan approval for an eight thousand square foot. Warehouse with associated parking and loading, and whereas the applicant has submitted a complete site plan application to the Town of Ulster Planning Board. In coordination with the Ulster Town Board, including a submitted State Environmental Quality Review Act short assessment form. And whereas the planning board agrees that the Ulster Town Board has final review and approval authority for this application. Now therefore be resolved, the planning board recommends that the town board be designated as lead agency. And type the application as an unlisted action under seeker. And now be it further resolved, the planning board recommends said town board. Formerly refers this application to the Ulster County Planning Board. For review consistent with the Ulster County Planning Board Land Use Referral Guide in New York State General Municipal Law two thirty-nine.
Thank you, can I have a motion to accept the resolution as read?
I'm gonna make that motion.
Okay, Mr. Alclist second?
I'll second it.
Confirming any discussion? Hearing none, any objections to the, to the motion? Hearing none, the motion's approved. And we'll get that ball rolling for you.
Alright, thank you very much. I look forward to seeing you all in person at some point in time, in real life.
That would be nice, sooner rather than later, huh?
Alright, thank you very much, and we will be in touch.
Have a great holiday.
You have a great holiday.
Okay, next item of business is B, RVW lighting. Voices, voices laying change of use site plan amendment.
Wake up Scott, I'm here.
Okay.
I think this is the latest I've ever been at a Town of Ulster Planning Board meeting.
We're always good to you, Scott, get gunning out.
You're the one that said you like Zoom meetings, so, you know, at least, right?
I, I, I do, but that's a discussion for another time. Let me just say that this application falls into two categories, I, I've been thinking. Over the last couple of hours, when the last time I brought an application to a planning board where we weren't. Doing anything to the outside of the building was, and I, I couldn't remember another example. So in that respect, it's one of the most uninteresting. Applications that, that I've ever had the duty and obligation to present. On the other hand, it's one of the most exciting economic development. Projects that I can remember in my history here in, in Ulster County. I'm, I'm prepared to share my screen, but I don't really have much to present other than I would, I would like to introduce Charles Brill, one of the three partners in RBW, and let him just take two minutes to tell you about their company and, and who they are.
Sure, thanks Scott, hi everybody. Uh, I wanted to talk a little bit about RBW. It's an award-winning design and manufacturing company that is a brand for architects and designers looking for a higher quality of light. By listening closely to the needs of our customers, RBW's forward-thinking, technology-driven approach invents lighting solutions that are out of the ordinary, products that take on unprecedented shapes and subtle upgrades to familiar forms. RBW's luminaires have been installed all over the world from renowned Noma Restaurant in Copenhagen to Fortune five hundred company workplaces and hot, and hotel environments around the world. And also including Scribner's Lodge in nearby Hunter, New York. RBW was founded in two thousand and seven, and our goal was to create a company that could not only change the game of lighting design, but also a positive impact on both the planet and our community. As one of the first decorative lighting manufacturers in the U.S. to be a certified B Corporation, we have verified, been verified to meet the highest quality standards of social and environmental performance, public transparency, and legal accountability to balance both profit and purpose. B Corps are accelerating a global cultural shift to redefining the success in business and build a more inclusive and sustainable economy. You can learn more about our company at rbw.com and about recent investments in our community, including cutting carbon emissions and our employees by offering a living wage and contributing a hundred percent of monthly healthcare contributions which are paid by RBW. We look forward to partnering with the Town of Ulster in our ongoing journey of exploration, discovery, and continuous improvement. And thank you for the opportunity to share a little bit about RBW. I also have my two other business partners on the line here, Alex Williams and Thea Richardson.
Nice to meet you all.
And Herb Gans, our, our Director of Finance, he's iPhone six.
Okay, thanks guys. Uh, big picture for the board, this is, um, Boise's Lane. I'm sure you're all familiar with the Edgewater properties at the end of Boise's Lane. Uh, Charles and his partners are looking to purchase the, the last building at the end of Boise's Lane. Uh, they are in contract, they're in a diligence period right now. They obviously have a lot to work out with financing, um, putting this puzzle together, uh, but they're very interested in the site. The seller, uh, one of the conditions of the sale would be that the seller would remove the link between United Healthcare and this property. That effectively is the only site plan alteration, other than a net reduction in parking, as we would be converting about thirty thousand square feet of the one hundred thousand square foot building into inventory storage for them. So this is a, a, a design professional office, um, environment. Uh, you can see pictures of their space in Industry City where they are in Brooklyn now. And light manufacturing, all the manufacturing is effectively done offsite. They do assembly there, uh, they want to control their supply chain and, um, move a growing, thriving, as Charles said, award-winning business that I've been aware of as an architect to Ulster County. And I, I can't remember anything this exciting, um, in recent years, so.
Well, thank you Scott, gentlemen, we're delighted to have you in the Town of Ulster. Uh, this is a pretty straightforward application. We, uh, as planning board, we have the authority to approve the site plan, it doesn't have to refer, uh, to the county or to the town board. David had written up some project review notes, Dave, would you like to go through those, any? Any, uh, items that are outstanding, uh, pretty, it's pretty, as you say, pretty straightforward application?
Yeah, it's straightforward, I, uh, I guess just for the record, if one of the, the applicant or a rep just wants to state for the record that you're not going to stir more than an acre of land, we, that, that, that would avoid triggering any referrals to any other agency.
I, I can assert that.
So, so people understand the removal of that connection between the buildings, what does it impact a little bit of walkway and landscaping between the two buildings and that reference to the, uh, to the parking, couple parking spaces? But that's essentially the only other changes. Uh, the board may want to know if you're going to, are you going to do any, you're in the lighting business, so. I, uh, are you going to do any exterior lighting changes or put a sign up?
And not at this time, um, securing in, uh, planning board approval is one of the conditions of sale. Um, it's certainly anticipated that we'll be back around, um, assuming that this transaction goes forward, that, uh, we'd come back to the board for, um, for signage landscaping, you know, after we get over this monumental hump of acquisition of a one hundred thousand square foot building.
So Gary, I think the board has everything it needs to.
Yes, I agree.
Proceed.
Any questions or comments from the board?
I'm good, Gary.
Okay. Hearing none, uh, we have a resolution, David, would you like to read it, please?
Sure. Whereas the applicant, uh, RBW Lighting seeks approval for an adaptive reuse of a portion of existing commercial building for office, inventory warehouse uses supporting their lighting design and manufacturing business, and such uses are permitted as a right in the applicable OM zoning district. And whereas the materials submitted in support of the proposed action include consent form signed, escrow agreement signed, completed application for site plan amendment, uh, short EAF part one, a site plan prepared by Dutton Architecture received uh, November twenty-fourth, twenty twenty, including cover sheet, existing site plan, proposed site plan, existing floor plan, proposed fourth floor plan and proposed color floor plan. And whereas the Town of Ulster Planning Board retains authority to approve the site plan amendment in coordinate, in accordance with the town code. And whereas the proposed action is exempt, that's the one acre issue, from referral to the Ulster County Planning Board pursuant to the referral agreement with the Town of Ulster. And whereas the Town of Ulster Planning Board upon review, the entire record determines that this action is reuse of an existing structure for permitted uses, does not exceed, meet or, does not meet or exceed other seeker determination standards, and that the proposed action is type two, and no additional action is required under seeker. Now therefore be it resolved, the Town of Pl, Ulster Planning Board hereby grants conditional site plan approval for the proposed action subject to the conditions, limitations, and restrictions set forth below. And some of you may see, uh, the first condition, it's compliance with Ulster County Planning Board, that should be stricken if that's the version you got. So there are five conditions now, not six. First is compliance with applicable zoning and building laws, rules and regulations. Two, compliance with all representations made by the applicant. Three, compliance with site plan, design plans, and all details cited herein. Four, the town's planning consultant, consulting planner and building inspector hereby authorized to approve minor site plan changes of ministerial nature which may arise due to unforeseen circumstances in the project's site development. And five, all fees, including consultant fees, shall be paid.
Thank you David, can I have a, uh, motion to accept the resolution as read?
I'll make that push, Andrew.
Andrew, second by Mr. Alquist. Discussion. Hearing none, any members opposed to this resolution? Hearing none, resolution is carried.
Mr. Chairman, Gary?
Yes.
Can I just thank you for living up to the representations that I made almost a year ago when I met Charles? And I said, if you want to move your, uh, company into the Hudson Valley, the Ulster, uh, Town of Ulster is the most business-friendly community that we work in, so thank you.
But you're certainly welcome.
I might add that if you propose to use a building that's existing, we will move anything we can.
Absolutely.
Thank you, as a, as a taxpayer, um, and a stakeholder in this community, this is big. And, uh, I'm really happy that Charles and his partners have, uh, chosen to consider this. They've, they've got a few, uh, steps to go between now and getting over the finish line, but this is very helpful. Thank you very much.
Welcome.
Looking forward to working with you.
Sure.
Thank you all, thank you.
My pleasure.
Thank you all very much.
Great holiday guys, happy holidays. Do thank you.
Happy holidays.
Okay, uh, last item of business, um, we have a lot line adjustment.
Oh man.
Dr. Edward Alio, Old Kings Highway.
There you go, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, good evening. Um, hopefully this will be short and sweet.
Yep.
Dr. Alio has, uh, two contiguous parcels here, um, would like to do a lot line adjustment.
After, after my.
Add, um, some property to this current, he, he resides, uh, currently resides on what's called revised lot line two. Let me see if I can share my screen. Can you see that?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So let me blow it up a little bit. So. Dr. Alio currently residing in lot, what's lot, labeled revised lot two and would like to do a lot line adjustment to add this zero point six, eight, seven acres to his current residential lot. There is a proposed building, the addition that I was seeking to do, that's the underlying reason for the lot line adjustment.
Um, I mean, I'm done, I'm going to sign out, I've seen enough.
Okay. I'm just looking at, uh, David's notes, um, there's no county referral required, it's not subject to seeker. Same ownership for both lots. Uh, unless board has any questions, uh, we have a resolution.
No, I'm good with it.
Yep, looks good.
Looks good.
Okay. David, have I missed anything?
No.
No, okay. Would you like to read the resolution, please?
Okay, uh, whereas the applicant, Dr. Edward Alio, seeking lot line adjustment in accordance with section one sixty-one, nine, and ten of the Town of Ulster Code. And whereas the applicant proposes to adjust the shared lot line between two parcels owned by the applicant for the purpose of an addition to a garage, and garage is shown a map provided, these parcels are, I've got the numbers. Whereas the proposed lots comply with a minimum lot size in the R thirty zoning district. And whereas pursuant to section one sixty-one, nine of the town code, the proposed action is classified as a lot line adjustment and is subject to approval of the Town of Ulster Planning Board. And whereas the applicant materials in support of the action includes signed consent form and escrow agreement, application for a lot line adjustment, seeker short form, EAF and sketch plan lot line adjustment map. Whereas the referral to the Ulster County Planning Board was not required to pursuant to the Land Use Referral Guide. Uh, whereas this action is a type-two action under seeker and not, and no further environmental analysis is required. And whereas the planning board considered the materials submitted by the applicant in support of the action along with the comments of its consultants made via memoranda. And whereas in accordance with chapter one sixty-one, section one sixty-one, nine, the proposed action is a lot line adjustment and no public hearings required. And whereas the planning board classified the proposed action as type-two, and no further action is required regarding seeker, now therefore be resolved, the planning board has determined they have fully complied with the procedural requirements of seeker, be it further resolved, the Town Planning Board hereby grants lot line adjustment approvals described above, subject to the conditions, limitations, and restrictions set forth below. One, the plat may be filed, shall be filed with the Office of the County Clerk after reviewed and signed by the Chairman of the Planning Board. Two, no changes, erasures, modifications, or revisions shall be made to, to the plat after approval by the Planning Board endorsed in writing on the plat. Three, the final plat must be filed with the Office of the County Clerk within sixty-two days of the date the final plat is approved by the Planning Board. And four, all fees, including consultant fees, shall be paid.
Thank you, uh, can I have a motion to accept the resolution as read?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Alquist?
I'll second it.
Second, Mr. Furman. Any discussion? And we'll do a roll call vote.
Ms. Tanner?
Yes.
Mr. Alquist? Mr., oh, Mr. Furman?
Yes.
Mr. Strabopoulos?
Yes.
Chairman Mulligan?
Yes. Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
You're welcome, have a great holiday.
Thank you too.
Okay, any other business to come before the board? I have one thing.
I have one thing.
Warren?
Did we approve the minutes?
No.
You're right, uh, thank you, I'm sorry, I rushed right over that. Has everyone had a chance to review last month's minutes?
Yes.
Okay, can I have a motion to accept the minutes?
I'll make that motion.
Second, right, all is in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, and I did, um, I think, uh, previous resolution, I didn't do a roll call vote, I did a voice vote. I assume we'll be okay with that. Okay. Warren, go ahead.
I just wanted to point out that we keep referencing the nine W corridor enhancement. That runs from Van Cleek's Lane to Legs Mill Road. It does not run up Ulster Avenue. No one has called us out on it yet, but.
Well, you know, I wondered about that myself.
Well, while we were discussing it, I pulled it out.
Okay.
So, I mean, we can, we can push for monument signs because they do look better until someone comes back.
What can we do to make it happen?
Warren, can you clarify that for me? The, uh, the area runs from where to where?
Um, runs from Van Cleek's Lane to Legs Mill Road.
That's not very far.
Legs Mill Road. Yeah.
No, I have, I have the, um, I have it from two thousand and eleven, I pulled it out. I have a copy, shows phase one, phase two, phase three. Phase three was from the intersection of Ulster Avenue and East Chester Street to Van Cleek's Lane. Phase two was from Eden Marie Plaza up to Legs Mill Road. And first phase was supposed to be that main corridor, which we've been seeing a lot of development in.
Oh, Van Cleek's Lane by the, uh, VFW?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, that, that was the intent from Legs Mill Road all the way down there, that, that's what we're talking about.
That, yeah, that's what we're talking about. So if you start referencing the corridor plan on Ulster Avenue, technically it's not in the corridor plan.
Right.
That's true.
Yeah. And I mean, practically speaking, because of the way those businesses are situated, I mean, there's a lot of pole signs that are still there in a lot of businesses and probably designed so that you can see pulling out of those.
Yeah, I would think the monuments would be a problem there on Ulster Avenue.
They, they can be, yes.
Yeah, I would think that would be a problem.
And so there has to be some flexibility, I think, in. And so there has to be some flexibility, I think, in, in, you know, you know, it's being practical about what's, what's safe and what's, what we would like to see. Uh, yeah, obviously a monument sign. But, so.
I just want everybody to be aware of that before we, you know, we tried to push an issue that we couldn't.
Yeah.
That's a good point, Warren.
Yeah, thank you, Warren.
Um, okay. Anybody else have anything?
Just a thought, maybe we could use that with the caveat that pole signs may be, uh, may be included if, if necessary. But it would, it would be good to have some guidelines through the area.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can, we can stick to the, to the site issue. Um, but I think we would put that on Ulster Avenue. Um, most of the corridor, you know, you can place a monument because the buildings are relatively farther back from the road.
Right.
So I think we stick to the monuments on the main corridor. And if we can get a monument situated on Ulster Avenue, then we, we look at that.
Yeah.
Eventually.
Yeah. I agree. All right, so the only thing I have is, uh, this is my last meeting as your chairman. Um, my term is up. I agreed to stay on an extra year. And, uh, that year's come to a close, so I come to a close. So I just wanted to thank everyone for your, your help and your support all these years as chairman. Um, I've enjoyed the work we've done. We've had some really great projects in the town. Um, and, uh, as you see, being business friendly really, really has a positive, uh, influence on people coming into the town, bringing business into the town, and I hope that continues. So, everybody have a great holiday. Merry Christmas.
Yep, Gary.
Merry Christmas, Gary.
You too, Gary. Thank you very much. We'll miss you.
Thank you, Gary. Yeah, we're gonna miss you.
Yeah, yeah, I'm gonna miss you guys too. It's been fun. I enjoyed it.
I do appreciate you staying on for my first year in this department, so I could get a feel for what's going on.
Yeah.
And now I'm moving forward.
Warren, you do a great job. You really do. You're, uh.
I try.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And Gabby. Gabby does a great job and so, uh, and.
I also try.
Yeah.
We love Gabby.
And, mm-hmm. And David's been great, uh, stepping up after Alan left, so thank you, everyone. Appreciate it. And Jeffrey Ring is, is listening in. He'll be your new chairman. So.
That was gonna be my next question.
He's on Jeffrey. Yeah, he'll do a good job. He's very thorough.
Cool.
So. All right.
Hey, Merry Christmas, y'all.
Okay.
Good night, everybody.
Same to you all. Take care.
Good night.
Happy holidays. Good night.
Merry Christmas. Merry Christmas to everyone.
See ya.
Stay safe.